Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting to order, the Amador County's Board of Supervisors. Wouldn't mind standing and doing the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we held the closed session upstairs, and direction was given on 1A, we'll be going back into closed session after the Board of Supervisors for 2 and 3, 4 and 5. Okay. Public matters not on the agenda. Discussion items only, no action will be taken, any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County. Board Supervisor, however, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for a report and recommendation for possible action as subsequent board meeting, please note there's a three-minute limit. There we go.
Good morning. Bill May, 4121 Jackson Valley Road. I had a handout provided to you folks that basically raises questions about fixing our county roads. The questions are fairly simple, straightforward, yes or no, does the board agree that the county roads are in poor and deteriorating condition? Does the board agree that some roads are dangerous and unsafe to drive on? Does the county have a plan to repair, resurface, or replace county roads? Will that plan be shared with county constituents? Does the county plan on requesting grant funds from the Safe Roads and Streets Act? Does the county have funds available for the 20% match? And I would just observe that even though it might not be much, you keep spending money on employee salaries. Probably the most important one for me is will the board schedule a public meeting so that your constituents can share their issues and concerns with the board? It's time you got transparent, it's time you set a meeting so your constituents can actually come in and talk to you and talk about your issues and concerns. I don't know what you're afraid of, I frankly don't. The the potholes, just as an observation, the potholes that fix majoritied quarries at taxpayers' expense do nothing to improve the roads. As a matter of fact, if you drive down Martin Lane, as I pointed out to your Public Works Director, you will find that the pots have gone and only the holes are left. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hey, Bill, I filled out your form, so you can take it if you want it. I filled out your form, you can take it if you want it.
Any other public opinion? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, we need to add 1A to, I'm gonna make it to 7C on the public hearing. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Hold on, I'm sorry, just for a second, just for everybody's knowledge, Supervisor Forster is at a remote location, it is on the agenda, and he'll be in via Zoom. Okay, thank you, Heather.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Approval items on consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please?
I'd move approval on the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
And Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, again, 5-0. Onto presentation of proclamation recognizing the month of March as Red Cross Month. Did you have anything to come up and say? Before we go on to our rest of our morning?
Morning.
I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for issuing this proclamation, and it has been an honor to serve the citizens of Amador County in their time of need throughout all disasters. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the public have anything to say? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Back to the supervisors? Can I get a motion then?
Make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing the month of March as Red Cross Month.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote?
Thank you, Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
And Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to read this resolution, whereas during American Red Cross Month is March, in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Amador County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Amador County whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provides help, hope, in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, comfort for families displaced from home fires, wildland fires, flooding, and extreme weather conditions, helping to make our community safer through the preparedness training for the citizens of all ages, smoke alarm installations, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting the military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of the service. Using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Their support, volunteerism, and generosity donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize the month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Therefore, it be resolved that the Amador County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month and encourages all citizens of Amador County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Come on back up and we'll I truly want to thank you for everything you've done, especially you personally. I've seen your face so many times that all these extreme emergencies we've had, warming shelters, PSS, all these different events, and I truly appreciate all your work and all your work, and plus all your comrades, I truly appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, on to 6B, assessor's rule correction or approval of P-19 base year value transfer being decreased over $150,000. Jim, you wanna come on up?
Good morning, Board, Jim Ernie, Amador County Assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning. So you have this as something, were there questions about?
Well, I'm asking you just to explain it a little bit, just give us a
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, as you look at it, it just looks really weird.
Yes, it does. The most important thing you gotta understand and remember is the term Prop 19. Their base year value transfer. I don't have the absolute details on each one of these, but there are nine of them of substantial reductions in their assessments. And in general, these are properties that were purchased by somebody who is over the age of 55, who had a property in a different county, who sold that property. That property had a base year assessable value of substantially or somewhat less than the purchase price of their new property that they bought in Amador, and they want, rather than have the purchase price or the value in Amador established as their assessed value, Prop 19 allows them to bring the assessed value that they had in another county and get that established as their new base year value to be assessed at that. And generally, it is substantially lower than what would be the assessed value.
Regardless of whatever their assessed value is.
Yes. Can I, I'm gonna give you an example of how this works, and and I'm not gonna be referring to any of these assessments specifically. But what happens is, I'll tell you of an example. This happened not too long ago, somebody in the Bay Area sold their house for $1.4 million. And in that county, in the Bay Area, it was assessed at just under $100,000. So they come to Amador County, they bought a house for about little over $500,000. And they were able to bring that assessed value from the Bay Area, that $100,000, and have it established on the house they just purchased for $500,000. And by Prop 13, we have to enroll that as their assessed value. So what they did was they sold the house for 1.4, bought it $500,000, had a $900,000 net gain, come to Amador, buy something, and whereas anybody in Amador County would be paying on the $500,000 assessment, they got to bring their assessment in, and with that $900,000 gain, rather than paying $5,000 like everybody else would, they pay $1,000. It is really an interesting situation. But right now, I'm working with some assessors throughout the state. As a matter of fact, I'm kind of the lead on this. There is a revenue protection fund that is supposed to be established by the state that in that Bay Area county, when they were getting, when they had that $100,000 assessment and that house sold for $1,004,000, the property taxes on that property went from $1,000 a year to $14,000 a year. That is a huge increase. And in Amador County, that $500,000 property is being assessed at $100,000, so we have a bit of a decrease. Well, the revenue protection fund is supposed to, according to Prop 19.
Take some of that revenue from Santa Clara and ship it here?
I'm not gonna say what county, but from the Bay Area County, they're supposed to put it in a fund and reimburse us and make us whole. Yes, that is what's supposed to happen. This proposition is so complicated that it is taking us months to figure out how to make this work. So we are having a difficult time, but we're gonna get through it.
But there's nothing we can really do about this, this is the law, right?
It's Prop 19.
Yeah.
Prop 19 also did something. It used to be that anybody in the county, it was inter-county, could transfer up to $1 million of assessed value to their children or to their parents, and it would not, and they could be excluded from being reassessed. So, you know, a family in the county, they gotta parents transfer their property to their children, it's it's a $400,000 property, it's assessed at $100,000. They were able to keep that $100,000, Prop 19 did away with that. So now that family in Amador County is gonna be paying full on that unless it is the primary residence of the parents and the children who take the property have to live in that property. And then again, you say, how do you enforce that? Because we don't go out every year and say, by the way, who's living here now? This Prop 19 is maddening. But we're dealing with it. So anyway, that's the, how that Prop 19 works and how it is working.
Mr. Chairman, we have Supervisor Forster has his hand up.
Go ahead, Supervisor Forster?
Yes, Mr. Rooney, I understand all you said, and it is a horrible proposition as far as we're concerned in Amador, but one question, there's two assessor rule corrections for the same person, Peggy Ann Papst. Why would there be two of those? Was, did she buy, or did she sell two properties and buy into one?
You say Peggy Ann Papst? Okay, let me, can I?
I think there might be, was there a homeowner's exemption in one of them or something?
No, I think there, oh shoot. All right, well, let me, you want me to look at that particular one?
Yeah, you can get back to us with the answer, I'm just curious why there's two corrections for the same person on the same property that she went into?
Sometimes that has to do with, we didn't get to it as quickly as we would have wanted to. So it covered two assessment years, and there would be two corrections.
Yeah, it's 2122.
Yeah. So essentially, it's the same property, same assessment, but over two time periods.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody else on Zoom?
Say, Jim?
Yes.
Could someone buy a house really cheap and then turn 55 and then sell it, move to the Bay Area and buy a multimillion-dollar house and get their assessment reassessed at a lower value?
Yes, kind of.
Yeah.
So what would happen is in Amador, if we reverse that, you sold your house for $500,000, it had a $100,000 assessment. You moved to the Bay Area, you pay $1,004,000.
Right, or more.
So now, the difference between that $500,000 and the $1,004,000 is $900,000 additional. You would get that $100,000 assessment, plus the difference between the sales price of your home and the purchase price of the one you bought in the Bay Area, which is $900,000. So that would be about a $1 million assessment, which would be better than $1,004,000. But it would be $1 million in the Bay Area where it is $100,000 here. I mentioned to somebody yesterday, I said, this is a two-way street, but there's a heck of a lot more traffic going one way than the other. Because people generally don't move from Amador to Moran, from Calaveras to Santa Clara, you know? So.
If I could call for a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve the assessor rule corrections approvals based on Prop 19 base year value transfers.
Second.
Have a first and a second, roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
And Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, 6C, discussion of possible action relative to presentation by the CAO and the Budget Director regarding the status of the 2022-2023 county budget and look ahead at the 2023-2024 budget. Staff is looking for any changes or direction that the board would like to see as the budgets are being sent to department heads this week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is the beginning of the budget process for the 2324 budget. I put the, this entire, well, almost, I edited this slide, is in the budget packet, which is unusual because we're usually not quite ready. But we are in this case, and I think we're, we've got some good things to show you. I'm planning on coming back in two weeks to kind of do an overview, a comprehensive conversation on where all of our funds are going. I know the concern from Mr. May and that enough isn't going towards roads, and we can talk a bit about how the road money is being spent. But a large chunk of our funding is being up by law enforcement, and there is a I believe a feeling amongst the board that taking money away from law enforcement is not proper use of the funds in order to go forward. But anyway, here we are right now, just to recap on what we approved last year, our fund balance was 7.4 million. You'll see that's projected to be down significantly this year with the total available financing sources and uses of $53.8 million. This is just the general fund, does not include the other funds that are, which is, the road fund is separate, the realignment funds are separate. This is just the general fund, but out of the general fund is what, what funds the general department, including the Board of Supervisors, most administration, the assessor, as well as all of law enforcement from probation, the DA, and the sheriff. The, just a little bit of history as to where we are now compared to where we've been in years past. You can see 2223, this current budget, we have, we've collected 48.82% of our revenues, which is high compared to years past, so we're in pretty good shape there. Revenues and expenditures are not linear, and that is, that's one thing to note. So comparing where we are this year to years past and where ultimately we've ended up in years past, we can put a pretty good projection together for where we'll be at the end of the, end of the fiscal year. As far as expenditures, we are higher this year at 48% than we've been in recent years, but not as high as we've been in the early teens years, so we're still feeling pretty good. Yeah, one thing to remember is that there's still a number of factors that are affecting our expenditures and revenues, and we'll talk about those going on, but the COVID funding is still in the system and skewing things a good bit. Here is the other funds that we've got, and you can see where they are and what we've got remaining. We're not sounding any alarms on any spending there, you can see the ARPA fund is at 120, 120%. That's just because we had not budgeted them all, but we've received subsequent direction to spend, so we're not overspending that. So looking forward.
So when your revenues for like GSA Support Services are 603, and then the expenditures are 921, we don't have to worry about that, or am I not reading it right?
That's okay, yes, because of the fact that, that our expenditures are not linear.
Okay, so this is like through the middle of the year?
Correct, this is as of January 1st, which is our six-month point. So yes. A good example is when we start spending, the general fund starts spending July 1st, but we don't get any revenue until December, because property taxes don't start coming in, we get, so if you compared that, you would, you would get very, very worried because we'd be in a negative situation. So we'll talk about that a little bit, too. This all leads to our projected number here, carry forward to 2.28 million at the end of 2223. That's what we're anticipating, which is down 5 million from from 2122. So what's happening with revenues in fiscal year 2223? Bradley Burns, we're actually right now looking at 3.4% increase. What we're actually collecting this year is 3.4% higher than what we had last year. So we are projecting for next year to be 3% over what we've what we had previously anticipated. So I think in 2122, we had a 4%, we projected a 4% increase. So we're 3.3, 3.4% over that, sorry. And then Prop 172 as well is up significantly. We are projecting a 3% increase for 2324. The TOT is also up, and we're showing a 3% for that as well. Jackson Ranturia and Harris, both of those are, we're anticipating them contributing what they contributed last year as far as in 2223, which is right about $1.4 million. And, but one area where we are down is our transfer taxes, and that would be expected with the increase in interest rates. Transfer taxes are down, those are the fees that are paid for recording when you sell your house or property, and with property tax or interest rates up, property sales are gonna go down. So we are projecting a decrease of 22% for next year.
But isn't that just like the last quarter or last half of last year?
Well, I wouldn't anticipate that it would come back.
No, I, no, I realize it's not gonna come back up.
Correct, yes, it has
Time soon, but the real estate market is still pretty tight.
It is tight, but I think we're gonna see that things are not gonna sell is what's likely to happen. So if nothing's selling and nothing's moving, then transfer taxes are gonna go into the into the black hole. So you can see what our property taxes have done year over year, going up to 2122. The, they have rapidly increased, and they continue to do so, and they are still up this year. So, and you can see what our sales tax has done, whereas 2021- Um, so, uh, and you can see what our sales tax has done, whereas, uh, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we're right around three percent for twenty-one, twenty-two and th- we're projecting three percent more for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Just a note on the property taxes, most of that goes to the schools.
Correct.
Sixty-two percent.
About, about, uh, one-third of that comes to the county and two-thirds goes to the schools.
Yeah.
So, uh, roughly, um, yeah, so, um, the, uh, the five-year trend, uh, for sales tax, obviously it's, uh, it fluctuates up and down, but, um, we are, uh, projecting them a relatively, uh, uh, minor three percent increase for next year, which appears to be holding, um, right now. We have not seen any, any, uh, downtick in that. So, uh, expenditures in, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're, we're expecting a four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-dollar savings in the general fund because of vacancies. Uh, we did have the COLA increases, uh, as of October and, uh, there will be COLA increases for next October, uh, October of twenty-three. Um, those have been negotiated and, uh, that's caused our incre- in our costs to go up by five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. We did set aside money last year to pay for those increases. Um, we did prepay our pers unfunded liability, that saves us two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, cause we don't pay that seven and a half percent, uh, increase for the, the fiscal year. Um, and, uh, we are e- estimating spending three hundred and twenty-five thousand of the one point two million dollar contingency. Uh, right now, we're at only a hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that contingency. Um, uh, that, the only concern with that is that it takes a chunk out of the carry forward rather than they, uh, having that whole contingency to carry to work off of. Uh, changes to our GAZB eighty-seven, I don't know if you all remember that, but that was the, where we had to basically, uh, pay for the H H S rent because they wouldn't let us, uh, bill it direct to realignment funds. That is now, uh, completed for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, fiscal year. So, uh, we, we will be recovering from this point forward with two years in arrears, uh, we will, uh, be recovering that H H S rent. So, uh, that two million dollar hit to the general fund has disappeared, um, which is good. And we used our C F F to, uh, uh, purchase the Wicklow Way, to, I guess, cancel the debt, uh, uh, for the, uh, for Wicklow, Wicklow Way property. So that has been, uh, that's been repaid, that debt is no longer on the books. Uh, so what we're projecting for next year, uh, our fund, uh, fund balance at two point two eight million, which I, I referenced, uh, property taxes estimated to increase by three percent, which is down a little bit from what we've had in years past, uh, but it still results in increased revenue of six hundred and eight thousand dollars to us. Um, the, uh, Prop thirteen increases, uh, they actually, rather than allowing us to increase, uh, uh, property values by the full two percent, the state restricted us to one point oh three six percent, uh, affecting about ninety percent of the homes in the va- in the county. So if you're assessed at two hundred thousand, but you're, well, if you're valued at two hundred thousand and you're assessed at one fifty, that one fifty would only go up by one point oh nine, oh three six rather than the, uh, rather than the full two percent. That was, uh, the state put that on us. Uh, property taxes in lieu of V L F, uh, estimated to increase by three percent, which gives us a hundred and sixty-four thousand and Bradley Burns is also expected to go up by three percent, um, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase. We are not showing any, uh, excess tax, tax loss reserve transfers, also known as the T E T R funds. We're not anticipating any re- transfers in or out, um, and, um-
So Chuck, real quick on the two point two eight million, is that a true carryover or is that, uh, spent at all?
No, that would, that's what we're anticipating being unspent from this budget cash on hand at the end of the year.
Okay, how much is that, ARPA funds, is that?
There'll be none, none of that would be ARPA funds.
Okay, so-
Yeah, uh, two point, that two point two eight million is unrestricted.
Okay.
But, uh, that's, uh, we anticipate that every year, uh, rolling over, so that's not unusual to have that carryover, but none of it is a, an ARPA fund.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, expenditures for twenty-two, twenty-three or twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, the, uh, wages are expected to increase, uh, by six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, our PERS unfunded liability costs are going to decrease. This is the first time you've heard me say these words. Uh, the, the PERS is going to decrease this year. Next year, it's also projected to, to decrease, but the, uh, they have managed to not hit their, uh, assumptions. They had one really good year and then it's back into the, into the, uh, toilet again. Um, so, uh, this year it's gonna go down by two thirty-eight, that is across all funds and next year they're actually anticipating it to go down by, I think, about six hundred thousand, uh, again, for, that's just our unfunded liability. Uh, so, um, yeah, that, uh, that's a benefit. It had been going up by as much as a million a year. Uh, so that's, uh, nice.
Is this, are we now on the, the downside slope or?
We're on the, we're on the downside slope, but since they have managed to not hit their target for this-
We're gonna go back on the upside.
Gonna come back. It's gonna come back and hit us, we'll talk about that in a minute too. Uh, health insurance costs are, uh, are going up a full five percent. We're expecting that to happen, which is a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Uh, we have set the, uh, contingency at a one point three million. We brought that up from one point two million, uh, where we should be, uh, practice the board has set forth is to set it at three percent, which I'm incrementally trying to get to rather than just doing it all at once. Um, we've never spent more than three hundred thousand dollars in, in a year out of the, out of contingencies, so I'm comfortable with that. Uh, uh, A eighty-seven cost decreased the general fund by two point three million. That, uh, uh, that's a, a large decrease and other expenditure, operating expenditures are assumed to be status quo. Uh, gas prices are, uh, are always a concern, um, but they are where they've been for the past year. Um, and then the county's risk, risk pool, uh, we're showing a, uh, increased liability in workers' comp, about five hundred and forty thousand dollars hitting the general fund in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so the, uh, that's what we're seeing, uh, but the liability and workers' comp premiums are, uh, are going up and you can see what they've done. They ha- held relatively flat for a while and, but they are, uh, both of those are going up. Um, so Cal-PERS, these, this is some detail on, uh, on where we are with both of the, uh, both the unfunded liability and the action, or the normal costs. Um, you can see what we've got, remember, we've got the six different tiers, uh, two pepper tiers for anybody who's being hired currently, uh, both the peace officer classic and the miscellaneous classic, uh, for anybody who's hired now and if you're the local prosecutor, uh, classic. Um, and this is our unfunded liability. So you can, you can see it, right now we're showing the two thirty-eight down and twenty-four, twenty-five, the number they're projecting is down five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we'll see if that happens once the, uh, that holds true, once they get their losses, uh, blended in there. So, uh, but that is just a projection. My guess is that will not hold. Uh, so what we are projecting right now, we're showing a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar deficit, which is, uh, at this stage of the game is, uh, pretty timid. Uh, uh, it's a good, uh, a, a good number. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of assumptions in there and we assume at this point pretty cur- conservatively. Uh, so, uh, I'm not advocating any cuts in order to, uh, to get to that to zero. We will have that to zero, uh, by the time we get to, uh, to our budget, uh, workshop and to our, uh, our, uh, to, obviously to our budget, our final budget adoption. Uh, so the base budget is, we've calculated this, uh, by updating all of our known changes, uh, and we, we are pretty conservative on that. Uh, we haven't, don't have G S A cost allocation, I T communications and technology have not been updated as yet. I know our, uh, I T matrix will be going up, uh, our costs associated with, uh, with simply Google and our email, uh, program is going up, uh, significantly. So, um, those are all things we're gonna, that will drive that deficit up. Um, so, um, and all wage increases that have been negotiated are included in there. Uh, so other potential issues, this is what I threw in, the slide I threw in, uh, after I submitted it for the agenda. The, uh, the bid price for the jail expansion project is still unknown. We believe we have enough set aside to cover where we believe that the bid is gonna come in and a little bit more, uh, but that is not guaranteed and the longer the state makes us wait and they continue to wait, um, the, uh, uh, the, um, the longer we wait, the higher that price goes. Uh, inflation is still high, uh, and many contracts across the county are, are seeing increases year over year that, that Google contract I just re- referenced, a lot of other consultants are asking to increase their rates, um, everything's going up. Um, property values will likely stall if not to begin, not begin to decline because of high interest rates. Now, as Supervisor Axe pointed out, it's gonna freeze the transactions, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to decrease. Uh, I think that's what you're, uh, that's what you were asking me those questions to point out that, um, uh, but if people have to start cutting rates or cutting prices to get their houses sold, then that will be reflected in the property values.
Well, some of them are coming down.
Yeah.
Or they're claiming that they've, they've slashed their prices.
Right.
Reduce them, I'm sorry.
Yes. Uh, so, uh, the landfill project is still out there. We have the two projects to repair the cap and to, uh, expand the pond, both of those at the behest of the regional water board, uh, which we are more than happy to complete. Uh, we worked out a, a sale or a loan agreement with the state revolving fund, uh, but we've been unable to get the state to give us the documentation to secure that loan. Uh, it just seems, a- a- and the longer they wait, it's all completely in their court. As soon as we get it, we will sign it, approve it and we will, uh, draw that loan, but the, as ra- interest rates keep going up, the interest rates keep going up on that loan as well, costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, the, uh, the regional water board doesn't seem to care about the fact that a different branch of the state is holding us up. Um, so I don't know, we'll see how that, uh, how that shakes out, but that is, uh, a big cloud on the horizon. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, Cal-PERS has not maintained their, uh, rate of return, so, uh, another increase will be likely be coming in future years to make up for those losses. Uh, so next-
Chuck, before you-
Yes, sir.
Before you go on to the next slide, maybe you can back up one. Um, you mentioned the, uh, no, forward one. You mentioned the, uh, regional water board incompetency, but that's pervasive in the state, uh, the jail project, you kind of glossed over that, but Department of Finance, the State General Services, it's just pervasive in the state with these, uh, departments not able to get the basic project approvals done on a timely basis, costing counties and cities millions of dollars.
That is, uh, yes, and I, I, I hesitate to use terms like administrative incompetency, but I cannot, uh, say anything less than there, than that relative to what we're seeing from the state right now. Nobody, it's not just this one department, whether it's this department or departments that are overseeing the jail project or folks that over at H H S are having to deal with the state top to bottom is non-responsive. It's just outright non-responsive. Uh, they are not getting any-
People probably don't realize how much time we spend lobbying to try and correct those incompetencies, but, um, fortunately I was muted, so you didn't hear the words I was using.
So, uh, so our next steps, our, uh, budgets are going out to department heads this week with instructions for a status quo supplemental, which means, uh, if you ask for more, you need to cut somewhere else. Uh, don't ask for more without, uh, coming prepared to, to make a reduction somewhere. Um, that, we are covering the costs associated with the, uh, with pay increases and step increases, uh, you know, the A eighty-seven increases. We're covering all those administratively when they go to the board, so, or go to the department heads, so the department heads don't have to cut for those, they just need to keep, if they ask for something more, they need to cut somewhere else. That's, it, it's, uh, it's a pretty simple, uh, instruction. Um, the, uh, and given the, the clouds that are on the horizon economically, I would say I'm going to be very, uh, very cautious towards any requested increases. Uh, and I would come to you with the same, uh, uh, same position. Uh, salary increases have been, uh, incorporated in there, that's what I just said. The, the general reserve is still at seven point seven million dollars, pay, payroll reserve is at three million and the jail reserve is at two million. We've identified other funding at three point four one for the, the jail project as well. Um, so that's what we're, we've got set aside in, in anticipation of, uh, covering the, the additional jail costs. So, uh, we, the, as always, the, uh, this will be, continue to, uh, be refined and, um, the budget workshop in May will, will have a better, uh, better outlook on things. Uh, this is our proposed budget calendar, March fifteenth, uh, budgets go to departments tomorrow. Uh, the budgets are due back on April seventh, uh, April seventeenth to twenty-first, Kim and I will, will meet with the department heads to make sure we understand their budget. Uh, so May second, and we need everybody to check their calendars on that. We've got our proposed budget workshop, which is the first Tuesday in May. It's an all-day thing. Uh, everybody good? Supervisor Crew says good. Supervisor Forster, are you good for that day?
Mine does not look good.
What if, um?
I'm, I'm good for it, but maybe everybody else?
Um, I guess we-
Wide open, but, uh-
Supervisor Onetto, anything, what's better for you, a better day? Thursday?
Um, I'm gone pretty much almost that whole week.
Oh.
About May eighth, I'm wide open that day.
Which one?
May eighth.
Um-
Be the next Monday.
The next Monday. How's everybody else working?
I can do the fifth or the eighth.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah, I can do the fifth, even though it's Cinco de Mayo.
Don't mind.
Can we have Coronas?
There's, okay with me also.
I can't do the fifth, I'll do, I'll be at CSAC Finance Corp. on the third, fourth, fifth.
How about the eighth?
Eighth or-
I just need to be out of here by four o'clock.
Okay, we will make that happen. Okay.
Okay, we'll change that to the-
We'll move that to the-
Eight it is.
All right.
So the, May eighth will be the budget workshop, uh, and then that will still leave us enough time to get to the thirteenth for the, uh, our, uh, adoption of the preliminary budget, uh, which has to legally be adopted by the end of that month. So if something should go wrong on the thirteenth, we still have the twenty-seventh. So, um, so that is all, uh, that is where we are. So I guess my question to you, is, is there anything that needs to change in our assumptions? Is there anything we need to, uh, uh, anything we need to include that has not been included? Uh, any increases, decreases? Uh, we have taken the Chamber of Commerce back to the, uh, level they were at before cause I, I might have been saying that with a one-time, uh, increase, so-
See, that's correct.
That, um, uh, I don't know, uh, anything else that, uh, that you all might think of. We will go line by line- We will go line by line at the, at that uh budget workshop, so that.
Now, the, the only thing I want to say is if we can find anything else for Rhodes, as, as Bill talked about earlier, I would love to, I mean, I'm, I'm truly hoping with our new grant writer that she will be able to find something that will assist us. So that's the.
That is uh, that is a challenge.
It is.
No, Rhodes is a biggie and I think this, this winter storm, there was some collateral damage, plus it kind of showed that some of her um snow removal equipments, a little bit older, had a few issues. Some you'd have normally and some was, I think some was um, I guess you say bad weather accidents happen, but also I think a little bit was maybe a little bit of showing a little bit of age. So it's.
I, I think you need to have sent, you know, self-help tax, so.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree.
Supervisor Forster, go ahead.
On the uh, Mr. Ely, on the carryover, historically, we've always been up around seven million. So aren't you, are you concerned or do you see us building that carry forward up in the uh, carryover up in the ultimate budget?
No, I, I, our, our carryover shouldn't be seven million dollars. We, we should be around the one to two million dollar range is where we should be.
What's the, what's the percentage? What's the uh, two million, two point two eight? What percentage of, is the budget of that?
That is uh.
Up to three percent?
Uh, it's uh, it's probably about four or five percent. Uh, 'cause the total budget is roughly fifty, so um.
General fund, yeah.
General fund budget is about fifty, so uh, yeah, it's about four percent.
So you think that's sufficient?
I, I think that's, yeah, the carryover, that's where it should be.
No, our reserve is.
The res- yeah.
Yeah.
The reserve is at seven point seven, and that's still where it's always been. So that's, that's unchanged.
Okay, thank you.
But the uh, I, there were years, we shouldn't be budgeting seven, eight million dollars uh extra. That, that's over budgeting and uh, you know, I know that there are uh, there are department heads that, that uh, well, it, it's my, what I stress to the department heads is that I want you to budget for what you think you're going to actually spend. Don't budget for contingencies. We will, we will address the contingencies. If your computer dies, gets struck by lightning, we will address that. I don't want everybody budgeting for extra. And when they all budget for extra, then you end up with that seven, eight million dollar carryover. And uh, that's, that's not where we want to be. We haven't been. The department heads are good at that.
The loan in this building is gone, what, twenty, twenty-six is it?
I believe, yeah, I think it's actually twenty-five. Uh, I will double check. Yeah, but that's about seven hundred thousand a year.
On the other hand, if the property taxes do take a big hit, we need that carryover.
Okay, anybody from the public comment?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Virginia Manor, District Three and District One. I um, wanted to make a couple of comments, please. First of all, as far as the property taxes and real estate sales and all of that, we, I know at Jackson Creek increased fifty percent for our um insurance because the state last year and all their wisdom came all the way down through Jackson and down into Ione, that sphere. And so getting insurance was almost impossible, doubled it to our homeowners too. We were, two days after the flood, our insurance company canceled us, pulling out of California. That's a big company, nationwide ally, and it's getting increasingly hard for people to not only stay here, um, but also to buy here and then try and find insurance. And I was talking to a real estate person that was saying that, just getting the insurance, especially in the up-country district area, um, very, very hard. So I think we really need to take a look at that hit in all, in all phases, not just in the boom we once enjoyed, but now what is the reality? And I'm sure the recent floods, um, snow impacts and all of that, for anybody that wanted to buy a vacation home, um, is gonna double, double think that, that particular item. The other thing that I was a little concerned about in the budget was that I know that um, there were agencies that came um before you and asked for increases, salary increases. And I'm wondering if some of that could be deferred increases till after you have this budget, mid-year budget figured out, uh, because then you know where your shortfalls are gonna be and you might have to make those adjustments. That, to me, was um, in particular in the Sheriff's Department, that was um going to affect significantly.
I, I think we're at a point where uh, we don't need to make, ask for those concessions right now. Uh, the a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit is uh, is manageable.
Right now, but as Supervisor Forster suggested, we may be seeing quite a dip in a lot of areas. And so I'm just suggesting that perhaps there's a hold until you have this kind of information to evaluate the full picture and what you're looking going forward and then, you know, make it more minimal or do whatever adjustment needs to be made. That's just a suggestion, just like a family budget. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, bring it back to the board.
Information only.
Yeah, it was information only, I'm sorry.
Well, if, uh, it was for any, any direction, uh, then anything I need to.
I think we're good.
To do differently, but yeah, we will, we'll go line by line and um, uh, in, in May, May eighth now.
I guess, are, do we have enough money in there for down to landfill? Because if it keeps raining, we'd be probably trucking a lot of water.
Oh, we're already trucking.
Oh, I know, but I mean, a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's there.
Okay.
That fund is, is separate though. That is a, a separate enterprise fund. Not an enterprise fund, but it is uh, uh, separate.
Okay.
Okay, on to six D, administrative agency discussion of possible action relative amending sections two point six eight point two, zero two zero and two point six eight point zero two five of chapter two point six eight as relative to salaries of elected officials. Suggested action is waiving the reading and scheduled for adoption on May twenty-eighth, consent agenda.
Supervisors, this is the uh, the ordinance that was, uh, it has to be brought back to you for uh approval. Um, it will be, it will come back again in two weeks uh on consent typically, unless you want to put it on regular. Um, this is the direction that uh, the board gave staff uh when we discussed it previously.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have just a little bit. Um, I'm gonna vote no on this. It's not so much on the COLAs for all the elected officials, but I think in here, um, it's probably, you can also have that, an additional, besides the COLAs, there's gonna be additional seven percent increase for sheriff. And um, I think right now, um, total cost of county for sheriff is like three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars. And curious question, Mr. Ely, does that also include, um, which I know he needs it for his job, but I, I think it's also used probably as whenever he goes wherever. Uh, does that include the cost for um sheriff's vehicle for Sheriff Redmond?
No, it does not.
So roughly, what benefit would that be? I mean, I mean, you're probably talking to their roughly eight, eight, ten thousand dollars a year, I'd think, with price of gas.
But it would take that to drive to and from one's home?
I think it's, that's just, he only goes to and from his home. I don't, I don't think that's the case 'cause I see a lot of government vehicles and I see them going all over the place, whether it's Cal Fire or whether it's County Sheriff or, or whatever. Um, so that, that's my complaint and it's so, how, do we have a total number of what, what it's gonna be? If you add a little, the eleven percent additional for um, the one year plus an additional four? I've got some numbers, but they don't seem quite right to me. Um, it looks like fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. There's a four per, four percent increase, but that has like seven percent plus four percent, which I would think um.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to revisit that number.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I don't see, I'm, I never, I haven't seen a number of what that total cost would be looking down the road. Um, but anyway, leaving that all aside, you're looking at three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars and I understand that you wouldn't be increasing health costs and certain costs that are set. But if I had to guess, I'd say when you start adding that up, you're gonna be getting up in the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. And I look at, um, I don't begrudge a fair salary for um, for an elected official or an employee. I just, I think it's too much and that's why I'm voting no. And I was making short.
Anybody else? Supervisor Axe? Supervisor Crew? Supervisor Forster?
No, I think I've said my.
Okay.
Well, I got one more thing to say too. It was brought up about how much more Calaveras pays in Amador. Um, not to be denigrating Calaveras too much, but in the past, some board members and I have said, sometimes what Calaveras does, we do the opposite. It seemed like it served us very well a number of times. Um, proof example is a building official. He's done us a very good job, man, I think Calaveras, he had issues in Calaveras, but he's been wonderful here. Um, so I think Calaveras, you've got, you've got one town. Um, so the sheriff's office in Calaveras does almost the whole county, except for the one town, Angels Camp. Whereas in Amador, we've got um, five towns, a couple of those are covered by sheriffs, but that's under private contract. So just food for thought. That's all I have to say.
Okay, call for the motion. Oh, excuse, excuse me, public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Now call for the motion.
All right, um, I'll move to approve the um, amending sections uh, two point six eight point zero two zero and two point six eight point zero two five of chapter two point six eight as it relates to salaries of elected officials, with the exception of supervisors. Waive the reading and.
Waiving the reading?
Waiving the reading and scheduling for adoption on March twenty-eighth on consent.
Second.
Okay, first by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Forster. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, four one.
And just for the record, I'm not opposed to COLAs for all elected officials. I just have a problem with that and additionally increase the sheriff. So I think elected officials have done a very good job and I thank them for the work they do.
Okay, we'll move on to six E, review and possible approval of the February twenty-eighth Board of Supervisor meeting minutes and the March third Board of Supervisor special meeting minutes. Any changes?
Uh, I submitted my one tiny change. Uh, and for the um, for the uh, March, for the regular, the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay.
And uh, I didn't see anything on the March third, so that's.
Anybody else?
Yeah, similar here, March third was fine, but that one had a small.
Okay. Supervisor Forster?
No, I didn't go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but uh, I appreciate Supervisor Axe, Axe's uh clarity.
Okay, back to the board. Call for a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Minor changes.
Yep.
Motion by Supervisor Onetto, second by Supervisor Axe. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Okay, that's five zero. We will go into recess till ten thirty to start the public hearing. Okay. 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 Okay, gentlemen, ready? Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. We are in the public hearings. Seven A, Planning Department, consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the general plan amendment. GPA four dash twenty-two. Twelve dash one, proposed amendments to the Kirkwood specific tree ordinance to clarify that hazardous tree removal or vegetation removal required for defense, defensible space clearing per Public Resource Code four twenty. Four two nine one is not subject to review by the Tri-County Technical Advisory Committee, provided that the tree vegetation removal is certified by a qualified forest professional.
Good morning, Chuck Maye with the Planning Department.
Morning.
Morning, kind sir.
Um, I could bore you with the staff report, but what really happened was in late twenty nineteen, Cal Fire started issuing defensible space notices in Kirkwood. I think that was the first time they had done that. And Kirkwood has since two thousand and three had a tree ordinance that said you needed uh, approval from the Tri-County Technical Advisory Committee to remove, to do any kind of uh, major tree removal, even for dead dying and diseased trees or even hazardous trees after the fact. So there was this conflict between the local ordinance and the state law, and we met with Cal Fire and U.S. Forest Service, and we all were in agreement that the state law overrode the local tree ordinance, and we wouldn't be trying to enforce uh, the tree ordinance when it came to uh, defensible space uh, removal notices from Cal Fire. Uh, fast forward a few years and Kirkwood decided, the community decided to become a firewise community, and one of the obstacles was this issue with the uh, conflict between the local ordinance and, and state law. So um, at the same time, uh, county staff was getting inundated with, or the Tri-County Committee was getting inundated with tree removal requests for dead dying and diseased trees and hazard trees um, to get permits for their removal, and you've got a shorter uh, removal season up there. That committee only meets once a month at best, and it became an administrative burden for people to actually take down trees that needed, that were going to have to be cut down anyway. So in the, in the overall revisions, we uh, re- added clarifying language that if someone receives a, a notice or is required to do uh, defensible space clearing, that is exempt from the permit requirements. And if a qualified forest professional says the tree is dead, dying, diseased, or is hazardous, the property owner can just take care of business, take the tree down, and you do not have to get a permit uh, to do that.
Okay, well, we're going to be opening public comment.
What is uh?
Go ahead.
What does uh, like Eldorado County do? I mean, they have a lot of trees up there by Tahoe, I mean.
Well, there's a, there's a small portion of Eldorado County that's subject to um, the Tri-County joint powers agreement with, for Kirkwood. Um, interestingly enough, Eldorado County never adopted the Kirkwood specific plan, because at the time that went, was going through the process in the early two thousands, they were doing some litigation.
But with respect to removal of trees, I don't think they, they have a lot of restrictions, you know? you know?
They, they do now, but they're, I think they've realized that there's some issues with getting in the way of defensible space requirements and dead dying diseased trees, particularly with Cowdor Fire, that they're gonna have to make some exceptions or exemptions to their current ordinance.
Yeah, I would say pretty much, people love their trees. But what else happened? I mean, you know, I guess our drought's somewhat over now, it seems like, but we've had the drought, and if you, if you go up, um, up in Silver Lake, Kirkwood, there's just dead trees everywhere. There's a lot, lot more trees that are probably fatally hurt. So, yeah, I think it's taken up a whole lot of time, and I don't think it's really accomplishing much what we're doing right now as far as having the TRITAC and the committee and all that. I understand the intent, they wanna keep trees, but, um, I think it was bad before the Cowdor Fire. I think the Cowdor Fire sent a lot of heat up into Silver Lake and Kirkwood, and a lot of those trees were, kinda, even though they're green, they're probably baked a little bit, maybe, I wonder? So there's a lot of trees dying there, and with the defensible space requirements, um, that needs to be done. So, yeah, I, I think probably them, um, there were changes to the ordinance that are probably a necessary step to take.
It's a different philosophy than there was twenty years ago when the specific plan was adopted, and that was maintain all the trees at, at virtually any cost, and with two close calls with Cowdor Fire and McKinley Fire, there's, and there's, and then becoming a, a firewise community, there, there's obviously a different mentality than there was twenty years ago.
Yeah, reality, uh, raised up its fingers, says, hey, I'm here.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Forster would like to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead Supervisor Forster.
Just one small comment. This is more ministerial, the, the whole, uh, changes that are being requested, but under page sixty-three of the draft revisions, under number eight, up on top, as long as they're gonna strike out TC and TAC, we probably should strike out, uh, proving body, probably should strike out N, I N, to make it, uh, make sense. So I would say approving body on whether or not to require a bond. That makes sense, Chuck?
It does, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, is there anybody else on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay. Again, bring it back to the board.
I move to approve the recommendations to modify the proposed general plan amendment with the findings.
Second.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Forster, second by Supervisor Crew, roll call vote.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I guess we're on to seven B. Planning Department, consideration of Land Use Committee's recommendation to amend County Ch, uh, Code Chapter seven point three six, Surface Mining and Reclamation, Section seven point three six point eight five, one eight five interim management plans by increasing in the number of successful five-year renewal terms for interim management plans from two to three, consistent with the California Surface Mining and Reclamation Act.
Thanks again. So, uh, SARA, the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act allows for mines to enter what's considered an idle status if they file an interim management plan. They don't have to be completely idle, but they're allowed to operate with up, up to ten percent of whatever their average growth has been in prior years. But they can maintain that status without being declared abandoned or without having to go and reclaim areas that are potentially gonna be disturbed again in the, in the foreseeable future. The state law allows for an initial interim management plan of five years, and it can be renewed twice, so for a total of fifteen years. The county code allows for that initial IMP for five years with one renewal, but that rule, the county code was adopted in nineteen ninety-six, and there have been subsequent changes to the state law to allow that second renewal. And so the, our proposal is just to be consistent with state law to allow an initial IMP and two renewals for a total of fifteen years.
Okay.
So, um.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, um, I guess it's been a while since this was at the land use committee.
A couple of years.
Okay, um, so that it's really the fifteen year change, you know, the, the extra renewal that is the major difference.
Right, from ten to fifteen total.
And then, um, if a mine is idle for that time, is, are there any, is it ever possible that there are any, you know, environmental concerns that should be taken into account?
So the, the IMP is, is designed to address that, but those mines are still inspected annually by the county, so that we can, you know, keep an eye on that, and, and those, those inspections are designed to make sure, one, they have adequate financial assurance on file with the county and the state to, to take care of the reclamation in the event the operator doesn't do that, and, and to see what the level of reclamation is needed so that, that, that bond or letter of credit is, is.
Is, is there ever, like, a mine scenario that a mine is idle and it's, but it's open, the ground is open, that it's causing problems somewhere, or? I can't think of anything.
In, in our, in most of the ones in Amador County, generally that, you know, it's, it's a surface mine, it has a pit, so everything runs to the middle, uh, without having, you know, surface waters, uh, going offsite. I can't recall any complaints or violations that have been issued for, uh, surface runoff, leaving, leaving a mine onto adjacent property.
But if there was a problem, yearly inspection would bring that to our, the attention?
Yes.
And be, and raise it to a level to be addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's the purpose of the annual inspection.
Supervisor Forster.
Thank you. Um, Chuck, under the county code seven point three six, that one paper you have inserted interim management plans, you added, um, section E, it's page seventy-one. And that section E doesn't seem consistent with what we're doing. It addresses the first five-year renewal, but not the second.
So that, that's the original, that's the code as it's currently written.
Okay, you just highlighted it's the original?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, open up public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Move to close public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Onetto, uh, roll call vote, please.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay. Again, back to the board again. Any discussion?
I think it makes, makes sense and us alliance with the state, um, SARA, Surface Mining Reclamation Act, um, so I make a motion to approve the recommended modifications.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Crew, roll call vote.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
It was.
Aye.
Motion by, uh.
Did I have that backwards? Sorry.
That motion did include with the findings, right Supervisor Onetto?
Sure, yes, it should, so I'll make that part of my motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor, I, Mr. Beatty, this is Greg Gilott, I just have a question. Is this, did this go to the Planning Commission?
It's, it's not part of the pa, oh, excuse me, the county code that's subject to the commission, or the planning commi, Planning Commission's, uh, review, so no, it did not.
So I, I don't believe this is something the board can adopt today. This is a more typical res, uh, ordinance amendment, so we'll have to do it like our normal ordinances, which is waive the reading and put it over for adoption at the, at the subsequent meeting.
We need a new motion.
We, we need to modify the motion.
Okay, well, I make a motion that, um, we approve in concept, amending, um, chapter, county code chapter seven point three six, Surface Mining Reclamation, Section seven point three six point one eight five, um, our intent to amend it and put it on for, waive the reading and put on for future meeting.
Second.
Okay.
So in it, essentially, Greg, we're waiving the reading today, correct?
Yes, you're wavering the reading, and it'll be on the consent agenda for adoption at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
And now we're on to addendum one A, which is now seven C.
I think we have to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I have to vote again.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay. United's vote, now we're on to seven C. Planning Department, discussion of possible action relative to public hearings to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny zoning ordinance amendment Z O A twenty-two twelve dash two regarding a proposal amendment to the county code chapter of nineteen point seven two point zero five zero B accessory dwelling unit to establish that rental terms for accessory dwelling units be longer than thirty days.
Thanks again. So when the board made the change to the minimum square footage for new single-family dwellings from eight hundred square feet down to three hundred and sixty square feet, you had concerns that there would be potentially an increase in those smaller units to be used just as short-term rentals rather than, rather than permanent housing. And, um, you adopted a resolution of intent that asked the Planning Commission and staff to move forward with an ordinance that would, uh, change, um, the, to amend the code so that all accessory dwelling units that were constructed would have to be used as long-term rentals or no rental rather than short-term rentals. There are two type, two categories of detached, uh, accessory dwelling units in the county. Ones are allowed to be as large as the primary house, there's no, uh, restriction on the, whether or not it can be a short-term rental, and they have to meet the local parking requirements. The category two units have to be under eight hundred square feet, there's no parking requirements, but state law and county code requires that they be rented for terms longer than, than thirty days. So all of the category ones are, are, uh, up for, up for discussion because the state law doesn't allow, uh, right, doesn't allow permanent or short-term rentals of the category two homes. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this up there, I believe, December and January meetings. Ultimately, they decided to recommend that we deny the, uh, proposed amendment. I think their primary concern was it reduced the flexibility for property owners that have accessory dwelling units that are the category one, category one, uh, type, uh, to use them for, for short-term, short-term rentals. There have been fifteen accessory dwelling units applied for since the statutory language changed on January first of twenty twenty. All of those have been category one, uh, homes, they have, there haven't been any that, that have been the, the category two homes. But we don't know whether or not they've been short-term rentals because we, we don't regulate them.
But the, um, the ordinance only applies to category two, correct?
Category one.
Category one, units must be as large as primary house.
They, they can.
No, but, well, category one has no, has no limit on rental duration.
Correct, which, no limit, there's no regulation on it at all.
But category two can't be, um, of, an Airbnb, correct?
Category one can be an Airbnb, category two is required by state law to be rented longer than thirty days.
Okay, and.
Yeah.
Are ordinance is consistent with both of those?
It is, I mean.
Okay.
The, the state law, that legislation was intended to create more affordable housing.
Yes.
And it'd be long-term rental, but they had this carve-out for units that, um, could be larger and, and used as, uh, short-term rentals.
Okay, but we're not restricting what the state is already mandated, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, the state law allows you.
So, so why?
Allows you to regulate the category ones so that they have rental terms longer than thirty days.
But we're, we're not doing that in this.
We were looking to.
That's, that was the intent, yes.
Okay. Um.
Which I'm not, I'm not, that doesn't mean I'm in favor of it, but that's what, what we're, I guess, exploring.
Okay, so that was. That's what came out of land use committee?
Yes.
Okay, I don't remember that part, I, I know that.
No, this came from the board, didn't it?
Accessory dwelling units.
It, it came from the board, then the land use, then to the planning commission, and, and now we're back.
Yeah, originally the board got in motion. I mean, I understand the intent, trying to get more rentals available for people, but one problem, one thing I've seen is a lot of times people won't rent their properties to make a longer term, because you get a tenant in there, the tenant tears up the property, and then you're spending more than you made on it, and I think also what happened too, is you had the whole deal with the COVID deal where people didn't have to pay rent for how long? So like the landlord said, hey, uh, I don't wanna be renting, having somebody in there, um, not collecting rent, and ha, and having the exposure, like, you know, just liability of damage to your property. With that said, and also to a, a number of people supplement their income by renting out, like, your category one, um, accessory dwelling units. I mean, a lot of people I know do that, and that's how they bring some extra money in, is by renting out a, like, a little small house they have on their, their property.
How would this ordinance affect people that are already doing that in, in category one?
It would, it would require those category ones to be, if they're rented, to be rented for longer than thirty days, they couldn't be.
So they can't be grandfathered?
I don't think that, no.
Okay.
Well, let's, uh, open up for a public comment. Oh, wait a second.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes.
Put a couple of comments in? I, I don't see anything that changes my opinion of what the recommendation was and the board sent forward to be adopted. One, these accessory dwelling units, to me, are not vacation rentals. They give an opportunity for someone to, to make an extra income by renting out, and the, the argument was brought up that, about, uh, basically evictions, that it will just cost money, it'll be a lengthy process if they have to evict, well, if they're in there for thirty days plus anyway, they're long-term renters. So, uh, just like anybody else, they have to deal with that issue. But as far as the property rights issue, you know, this came up originally in our discussions that we're protecting the property rights of the adjacent property owners too, so you don't have that case where someone on the adjacent property is shooting or playing super loud music, yes, you can deal with that with the loud, with the noise ordinance, but, um, we're kind of preempting that by adopting this measure today. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, but I, I, one thing I will say is, I'm just calling it, calling it what it is, you can have an idiot, whether it's a short-term rental, um, long-term rental, or somebody has lived in the county, you know, a hundred years, so, um, and sometimes there is that too, I mean.
Well, I, I do know.
I would agree, I would agree with that Supervisor Onetto, but those people coming in for a weekend are there to have a good time, and sometimes they, they have too much of a good time.
A lot of times, probably true.
I, I do know I've had two, three incidences up in the up country where people have, uh, done a short-term rental while we've had these last storms, because they couldn't go up to Kirkwood, so they rented something there, they get their cars stuck in the middle of the private roads, and, um, just left them there, and abandoned the cars, and the people living around them couldn't get out of their own places, so it's been a interesting couple weeks, uh, for short-term rentals. So now we need to open up public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Public hearing?
Okay.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay. It is now back to the board.
I would move that we approve the recommendation to modify the proposed ordinance amendment with the findings.
I'll second. I'll second.
Um, question on that. I thought they did not recommend approval of ordinance.
Planning modification recommendation was to deny it, correct?
Yes. Is that... Okay, so we're denying the mo- we're denying, um, going forward with the modification? Is that your motion?
Well, the intent is to approve, override the Planning Commission, and approve the proposed ordinance amendments.
Okay, uh, okay, then, then you're not taking the Planning Commission's recommendations in?
I'm not taking the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
He's taking the land use committee's recommendation. But it's reversed.
Well, and...
So, that would basically, by doing that, um, short-term VRBOs would go away in the county then?
Only if...
On accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
That's, that's correct then, Chuck?
All ADUs would be longer than thirty days.
If rented, yes. Some people use them family and friends only, they're not rented, so that doesn't apply to them, just if it's rented, the term has to be thirty days or longer.
Okay, call for a vote?
Thank you Chairman Brown.
No.
Vice Chairman Onetto.
No.
Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Forster.
Aye.
Okay, it'd be a three-two vote. And so now, uh, we are done with regular meeting, and we'll go back to the closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.